This meeting to order, we have a quorum. All members are present, but Mr. Blaine liked to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Shelley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. On to item two, opening comments. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I welcome you to our first work session following the proposal that had the honor of sharing with you on Monday night just forty-eight hours ago. And I know that tonight, very quickly, we are going to be, again, with a very strong staff team that I appreciate greatly for their work, not only in developing the budget to this point, but for trying to prepare this evening for you to be able to take what will be a deep dive into the details of the proposal that I merely outlined and tried to justify on Monday night. I want to just share a couple of opening pieces to set the stage. One is that as deep as we will try to go this evening, this is just one of two scheduled work sessions over a week's time. So just keep in mind, anything that cannot be fully discussed or there are lingering questions and decisions to be made that we do have Monday night scheduled. The second thing that I wanted to share is that in the proposal that I went over on Monday night, I don't believe I outlined one or two pieces that I think you need to be aware of as we go through this in advance. I think you may have sensed it, but at least for the first time in the last few years, and I think probably since I've been superintendent, we have an opportunity to try to make some things happen for the FY nineteen budget that are not being hindered, or there are not barriers by way of the usual mandatory cost increases that we have experienced really every year. And I think that, again, gives an opportunity because we can never be sure that those won't, you know, rear their ugly head in another budget season. But this year, as we'll talk about, from health insurance to VRS rates, we are in a better position to start where we don't find ourselves already having to use any additional budget capacity that we've realized through additional state funding or local funding by trying to offset those at the beginning. The second part is that I think that will lead to some substantial discussion and analysis from the board will be that in order to devote more discretionary funding to our number one and two budget goals, which are our compensation proposal, pay increase for all of our staff, and the increase in FTEs, you know, full-time equivalent staff members to support our schools and our students' needs. In order to try to have additional budget capacity, I had worked with staff to, at least at the beginning, make adjustments to our health insurance to basically make sure that we had the opportunity to do more. But you are going to be able to review that and make decisions as to whether you support where we have currently made reductions or found additional capacity through health insurance plans and costs, or you may decide there's other ways you'd like to proceed. And I think that is something that you need to remember at the outset that that's going along with the desire to increase pay is we have to have not only the ability to sustain the proposal that I've made for not just this year, but for three years, and then also be able to sustain the health insurance benefit costs that we have as a school division in order for that to be a reality. So I lay that out for you just at the beginning. I'm going to turn it over at this point to Ms. Gaines, our Chief Financial Officer, and all of the staff team that are going to be contributing to the discussion this evening. So with that, I return it to you, Ms. Grant. Thank you.
That brings us to Mrs. Gaines and item 3.01, projected revenue details.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. If I can please have the floor computer. In looking at the outline for this evening, you'll basically see the projected revenue details, budget development reallocations, and expenditure reductions. We're going to talk about the compensation proposal, a five-year health insurance plan strategy that we started last year. We're going to give you an update on where we stand with the revised CIP proposal for 2019, 2023, talk about the next steps, and then School Board member closing comments. So what I wanted to start off first, if you look at page four, what we've attempted to do tonight is not to overwhelm you with so many documents, but just with one copy of the PowerPoint. As we get to the health insurance items, we'll give you additional handouts. So number one on page four, when looking at the budget in its totality for FY nineteen, three hundred thirty-one point one million, and you can basically see here that Spasylvania, we have seven funds. The first fund being Governor's School, two point two, Detention Center, one million, Food Service, eleven point three, Adult Education, point eight. The main focus of tonight's meeting, we're going to focus on the Operating Fund, two hundred eighty-two point two million, CIP, thirty point eight, and then Fleet Service, two point eight. We do want to highlight that wherever you see the asterisk, this is where the School Board is the fiscal agent, and thus the funds are recorded on our books. So really quickly, for the different funds, we just want you to see here how they're funded. When you look at the Regional Commonwealth Governor's School Program, they're funded from two sources of revenue. You have state and local. When you look at your state funding, it's about a million, and your local is about a million. So we just want to point that out there. When you look at the Rappahannock Regional Juvenile Detention Center, you'll basically see here they're funded a million dollars. All of their funding comes from the state. In previous years, they did have federal funds, but that amount has been cut from the budget in the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars from the federal government. Next you'll see Fund Three, Food Service. They have quite a few different revenue sources. Number one, they're going to be using fund balance for several items, one being equipment, also looking at a cost reallocation that we're going to be taking care of this year. Also, this will cover our cafeteria aids whereby we currently have two at all of the seventeen elementary schools. They do have state funds of about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and they have a small local budget of about sixty-four thousand. Their largest share of funding, of course, comes from the federal government being reimbursed from free and reduced meals, and then we have cafe sales of about four point eight. Then you have the Regional Adult Education Program. Again, here they have state funding of about two hundred thousand. Again, a very small amount coming from the local of about twenty-one thousand, and then they have federal funds of three hundred and fifty-three thousand and other funds of about two hundred thousand. So the main focus here was just to highlight that all of these funds have a very small portion of local funds. Thus the reason why we'll be focusing on the Operating Fund. When you look at the Joint Fleet Service Program that started back in two thousand and nine between the county and the schools, they have fund balance that they're going to use in terms of replacement of equipment. And then they have other funds, funding primarily coming from transportation for the schools, schools' maintenance department, as well as the county. So then that brings us to the Operating Fund. When you look at the Operating Fund here, it does exclude CIP. So you can see the revenue sources here, state funding, a hundred and forty million, federal funds, ten million, coming from the county, a hundred and twenty-four million, other funds, five point two, and you will see the gap here of three point five. So just to share some details, when looking at the state funding, you know that the Governor did present his budget back in December, December the eighteenth. When looking at his proposal, it does include a pay raise, but that pay raise is not funded until FY twenty. The good news for Spasylvania County Schools, not only did we receive additional funding because it was the first year they buy any of them, but also we are expecting an increase in student enrollment. And in a moment, we'll show with you the difference between enrollment and ADM. So the projected ADM for nineteen is twenty-three thousand one seventy-five. By way of next steps, the General Assembly, both the House and the Senate, they're going to have something called crossover on February the eighteenth. And then there will be a conference call on February the twentieth whereby we'll be able to see the difference coming out of those committee discussions. When you look at state funding, you can basically see the breakout here. The largest share is money coming from basic aid. You can also see a small increase in sales tax. We have some additional SOQ funding for special ed. And then we have some at-risk funding as well as additional K-three primary funding because we have three additional schools. And then we have some funding for English as a second language. And then we did see an increase in our composite index, which means we lost about three hundred thousand dollars in state funding. So here you look at the composite index, how it did go up from point three six one seven to next year, point three six two seven. When the local composite index goes up, the division does lose state funding, and the idea is that these funds will be replaced by the locality. We talked a little about the ADM. This is basically the average number of days that a student is enrolled in a school division. You'll basically see that we did see some declines in fifteen sixteen, another decline sixteen seventeen, and then budgeted for FY eighteen, twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three, but we are expecting more. So therefore, when we did our projections for the budget cycle that we're looking at, we are projecting twenty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five kids, which probably is bringing in an additional million dollars of the seven million. Then in Dr. Baker's budget on Monday night, you did see student enrollment. Here, these numbers are used by Don when he's preparing his CIP, but the ADM is the number that we use when projecting the budget per VDOE's state formula. Federal funds, when you look at the budget here, we have about fifteen point eight million. We are projecting a decline in Title I funds. So again, whenever you have declines, you have to make up those funds in other areas. We are seeing a slight increase in Title VI and Title II. Then when you look at other revenues, that budget is twelve point nine. We are seeing some increases in various areas, but decreases are the facility use fees. I'm not having as many churches as we have had in time past, and we are looking to eliminate the athletic fee. And so that is basically a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So you have to backfill that with other funding. In terms of the locality, the budget here is one twenty-five point two. We did have one-time funding this year of three hundred and thirty-three thousand that will go away in nineteen. Based on information coming from Mr. Taylor, he's looking to fund the Increase for Debt Service, which is about one point five. And then when looking at where we are with the additional local transfer, we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some additional monies for the Evergreen study. So those are basically your highlights for your revenue details. So the next item. Here, Dr. Baker did talk with you a little on this. The whole idea here is that we wanted to share with you that we've been working very hard on the budget since about October, doing various heavy lifting, just to build budget capacity and also to gain some efficiencies. So the first one that you'll see when you take our CIP, we have a budget revenue increase of ten point nine. We did see a decline in the VRS rates, both the professional group and the non-professional group. That savings was about nine hundred thousand, which gave us a total amount of eleven point eight to work with in terms of helping our students be more successful. Baseline reallocations, about two point six. And this basically represents when the budget was prepared about a year ago. Now that you are actually in the budget season, we did have some turnover, and you are able to garner those savings when you replace those positions at a lower salary. So it's basically something called lapsed dollars. So you are able to take advantage of that. The other piece deals with the Operating Fund. With our Food Service Program, we do have a fund balance of about three point six million. And in working with DOE, they have agreed that we can actually charge the Food Service Program for electricity, utilities, and insurance, and that amount is about three hundred thousand dollars. So those funds will come back into the Operating Fund, whereas in time past, the Operating Fund was paying for these utilities and insurances for the Food Service Program. Also, in terms of modernization of our health insurance benefits, we've been working very closely with the Employee Compensation Focus Group, and we'll give you a little bit more details as we go along in the presentation for this one. Here, the projected savings is one point eight, and that gives you a total savings and revenues of sixteen point six million. So moving along, where are the increased investments being targeted? Based on Dr. Baker's presentation on Monday night, you saw that his number one goal is to increase employee compensation. So here, you're basically looking at the final number, which is six point eight million, and it's basically divided up in about four categories. Number one, you have your four percent pay increase for your teachers. This will be done over a three-year period. So you're basically looking at four million for the next three years. A two percent pay increase for non-teachers. This will be done over a three-year period, about one point one. And then you have on top of that for non-teachers, the Evergreen Study Recommendation, which is to bring a hundred and fifty-five employees to the minimum midpoint, and then the Classification Date Parity, which will be done over three years. And that total is one million, and we'll give you additional details on that. Here, Dr. Baker wanted to highlight for you this evening what has been the trend for the last five years in terms of employee pay increases. You'll see in 2015, there was a step and a one percent. Twenty sixteen, a three percent pay increase for all employees. Twenty seventeen, a two percent pay increase for all employees. And 2018, another two percent pay increase for all employees. And then you'll see the proposal that we have before you tonight for 2019. So let's talk a little bit about the Evergreen Study. As you are aware, this was a study that was conducted with the county jointly. Based on the results coming in from Evergreen, they are proposing three solutions. Keep in mind, these solutions are separate and distinct. However, when you look at the Bring to Minimum solution, in order to bring those individuals up to minimum, that is included in the Classification Date Parity Study as well as the Range Penetration. So when you look at the Bring to Minimum, you're basically looking at the numbers coming straight out of their report. A couple of things we want to make note of. Number one, these numbers are 2017 amounts. Number two, they are before any benefit calculations. And normally, we use a benefit rate anywhere between twenty-eight percent and thirty percent. The number of employees impacted by Bring to Minimum solution is about a hundred and fifty-five, and we'll give you more details in a moment. The average targeted salary increase for these individuals only is about point four percent, less than one percent. And in this solution, there are no teachers. Based on the study that was done by Evergreen, we had no teachers that were below the minimum point. The next solution we want to draw your attention to this evening is the Classification Date Study. And you're basically looking here at a cost of four point four, the number of employees impacted, sixteen hundred, and the average targeted salary increase here is three point nine, and you do have about a thousand teachers in this solution. And then lastly, you have the Range Penetration. The total cost here is seven million. It makes sense that you have more employees impacted, two thousand and seven. The average targeted salary increase is five percent, and here you have sixteen hundred eighty teachers. So now what does this all mean? When you look at the Bring to Minimum solution, what they're basically doing, they looked at employees where they were as of 2017. And they looked at the midpoint, they looked at the minimum point, and the max point. So the goal here was to take those hundred and fifty-five individuals who they saw were below the medium point. So just to bring them to the medium market, a hundred and fifty-five employees, according to the cost back then, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. When you look at the Range Penetration Parity, they basically looked at where the employees were on the pay scale, whether they were minimum, mid, or max. If we saw that they were at mid, which was step fifteen, they would move them to the midpoint on the new pay scale created by Evergreen. So you're basically taking them from where they currently are in that range and placing them on the new pay scale at that range. And then lastly, the Classification Date Parity. This one here, according to Evergreen, is more fit for non-teachers. And what they've done here is to look at where the employees were based on their years of service with Spasylvania County Schools only. And when they looked at that, they were able to bring them up to a recommended point. And that would be at their current job classification. So for example, when they looked at a principal, they would look at how many years that principal had been a principal with Spasylvania County Schools. They did not look at experience outside of Spasylvania. So in Dr. Baker's presentation on Monday night, in terms of what was actually included in the budget, he is recommending that you consider for consideration the Bring to Minimum. Those hundred and fifty-five individuals would be brought to their minimum market rate in one year, not a phased approach over three years, but one year. Then when looking at the Range Penetration Parity, based on some discussions that we've had with Evergreen, it was recommended and they agreed that we should pursue a hybrid approach. Because when looking at the hybrid approach, if you're able to give your teachers a four percent COLA, that's going to be beneficial in various aspects. Number one, the starting teacher's salary will be forty-two thousand three hundred and thirty. Number two, you would basically receive an increase of four percent from the beginning to the end. If you were to look at what Evergreen was proposing, those steps under sixteen, in most cases, their step increase or their progression increase would be two percent or less. So when you look at the hybrid approach, it is better for our teachers. Here, Dr. Baker is recommending that this solution be implemented over a three-year period, so about four million in nineteen, another four million in twenty, and another four million in twenty-one. And then finally, for the Classification Date Parity, according to Evergreen, they are recommending that we consider this one for non-teachers only, and this one would be recommended for implementation also over a three-year period. So we've kind of shared with you what the Evergreen solutions were and what has been included in Dr. Baker's budget. So now you're probably wondering specifically what employees are going to be impacted. So what we're sharing with you today, when you look here on slide twenty-five, the Bring to Minimum solution does impact a hundred and fifty-five employees. When you look at the Pay Plan category, here, I've broken it down for you by employee count. The largest two that you will see, of course, would be our Peer Educators. The associated cost before the escalation of the pay raise and before benefits is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the next largest group you basically would see would be Bus Aides, a count of fifty, and the estimated cost with that one is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Keep in mind, the average increase is point four percent. So it's not a large dollar of funds. The one I want to point out for the hybrid approach, I want to point out for our teachers, all of them would receive a pay raise. If we had used the Range Penetration coming from Evergreen, we would have had about eighty-three teachers who would not have received a pay raise. So again, that's further support to use a hybrid approach, which is proposing a four percent COLA for all of our teachers. So when looking at the Classification Date Parity, again, this is for non-teachers. When you look here at this one, you can see Comp of Directors, two. You can see Comp of Principals, eight, Supervisors, fourteen. You have Nurses of four. And one of the largest groups here are our Peer Educators, two hundred and one, and the estimated cost of about four hundred thousand. The next page, we have just a few more. On Classification Date, keeping in mind, these are our non-teachers. Drivers Pay, in terms of our drivers, is the largest group that you would see here, but it does also include our Bus Aides, as well as our Custodians, our Clerical Staff, our Maintenance Department, our Health and Safety Officers, as well as our Cafeteria Workers. So the total combination of the Bring to Minimum and the Classification Date is about a million dollars. On top of that, these individuals will receive a two percent pay increase. We also wanted to share with you this evening the approach that the county has taken. And they've also taken a three-pronged approach. Number one, they gave their employees, which is eight hundred and five, a one point three percent COLA. They also looked at a longevity increase for five hundred and twenty-two employees. The estimated cost here was eight hundred thousand. And then in turn, what they did was to implement Phase One of their compensation proposal for five hundred and twenty thousand, impacting five hundred and ten employees. So again, they're taking a very similar approach that Dr. Baker is considering as well. This was approved by the Board of Supervisors back in June with an effective date of July. So for the county, they actually received their pay raise in this current year. So we are one year behind. And based on information that came out of the Employee Compensation Focus Group.
I just wanted to pause you right there in case anybody had any questions about that section of the presentation because the employee compensation was detailed, and I just wanted to make sure no one had any questions. I just thought it might be easier while we were discussing that to talk about that now.
A couple of things, if I may. Didn't see Athletic Directors on there, twenty percent underpaid, that's rough average, my number. Was that skipped off the list? Because it was on the original list.
So what we've done for that one, Mr. Twig, in meeting with the Employee Compensation Focus Group, we also noticed the same omission. So what we've done, we've reached out to Evergreen, and we're awaiting an explanation from them as to why it was included in the report per se, but not included in the details that we have presented. So we will hopefully have an answer by Monday, and we will share that with you. But that was pointed out by the Employee Compensation Focus Group.
Thank you. Can you project why, whether or not they will be added?
I will have the answer for you on Monday when I receive that from Evergreen.
Okay. And I don't see, slide twenty-eight here, all this stuff about the county. I think it's okay information, but I don't think it's significant based on what we're doing. I think the key here is that we just need to look at our people objectively and pay them effectively. So I just think that's an excess slide. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer.
I backtracked to page eleven.
Of course.
On a revenue item that I noticed in parentheses, six hundred and fifty thousand. Is that what I think it is?
So we know, Dr. Meyer, when you're working with the state's budget, the shell process that they use. So in essence, when you actually look at the template, it does show that our compensation supplement was reduced. However, it has been embedded in your basic aid number, which is your five million. So it's still being supported.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Are there any further questions at this point? Mrs. Gaines, you may continue.
Okay. When you look at slide thirty here, this was goal number two that was stated by Dr. Baker. Increase human capital to support student success. So here you basically see an itemization of those sixty positions. We do also want to bring to your attention that the total minimum projected positions needed over the next three years is about a hundred and twenty. And what we're trying to do is to take a systematic approach and be methodical about it. And so we're looking at 2019 recommended budget, including twenty of those, sixty of those a hundred and twenty positions. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Flannard, and she'll give you rationale supporting the staffing increases. Mrs. Flannard.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. See if I can organize myself a little bit. This evening, I would like to go over, as Ms. Gaines stated, some of the rationale for the proposed positions within the Instruction Department. I would like to let the board know that it is certainly, this is not just an opportunity for the Instruction Department to say what they feel that they need. There are other stakeholders' voices. We have had an opportunity to gather input from our principals and their leadership teams, as well as opportunities for Dr. Baker to talk with teacher advisory. So this is a... So this is a conglomeration of a lot of voices that is before you this evening. The first is sixteen regular education teachers, and that is in the general education to support not only our current larger class sizes, but also for the projected enrollment that we anticipate. And we also would like the board to note that we have four additional schools that are coming on board for the Governor's Low Class Size Initiative. And with the anticipation of those four additional schools, we would also need to add additional classroom teachers to support that initiative. In the area of gifted resource, we do have our gifted resource teachers, as Dr. Baker mentioned on Monday evening, that they support all of our students. And in an effort to really look at providing equity for our students, they're also reaching out to make sure that we are identifying our gifted learners early, as well as equally and equitably. So their support assists us with the Rising Scholar Program, as well as making sure that our twice-exceptional students have access to gifted resources as well. Dr. Baker mentioned on Monday evening, that was woven throughout the presentation, the increase in need for mental health. And it is apparent in our school division that our students have large needs. And overwhelming response from our schools is the support needed for mental health. And so we are looking to support our students with five additional social workers, as well as three counselors. As the board may recall, this past summer, we did have a change in the attendance law, and many of the board members anticipated then that we may need to add additional staff. So coupled with the mental health support is also a law requirement. And to date, so far, we do have seven hundred and twenty truancy attendance meetings that need to occur, as well as three hundred and sixty students requiring CHINs petitions. But more importantly than that, a hundred and ninety-three threat assessments and two hundred and forty-three risk assessments were conducted. And the threat assessment law also changed, and I do believe Dr. Baker mentioned this Monday as well, and it now requires assessment of community members. So that is an additional component for us. We have seen an increase in foster care children. We have an additional fifty-nine foster care children this year. And we also have over three thousand families that do meet the criteria for living in poverty. In the world of our school counselors, there are school counselors are on the front lines of assessing the risk assessments themselves, as well as there are two hundred and eleven students that have requested to participate in a co-op experience. And Dr. Baker mentioned that the Virginia Profile of a Graduate is new, coming to us from this VDOE that is going to open up this coming school year for our rising ninth graders. So our current eighth graders will be impacted by the Virginia Profile of a Graduate. And we do see that as a step in the right direction. But with that step, it does have a requirement that our students participate in internships and work-related experiences. And we need our individuals and our school counselors to help support that opportunity. As well as, the current number of school counselors does not technically meet the standards of quality accreditation standards. So we are short on school counselors. So those are the rationale for those positions. And as we move on, the one assistant principal position is potentially at Robert E. Lee Elementary School. And that enrollment has reached over five hundred, and it is similar in size to Cortland Elementary, as well as Spotswood Elementary, which both, as you know, have assistant principals. So to bring them into alignment, it would be potentially at Robert E. Lee. The two administrative interns is a program that unfortunately, as times were needed, was no longer available to us because of the current, not only county, but national and global economic crisis. At the time, we lost the program. And so we are looking to add two administrative interns, and those would be restored at the secondary level. And we would really look to see the greatest needs at the secondary level. So it would not just be instructional needs, it would be all needs that would be looked at at that time. So it could be discipline, attendance, instruction, and we would fill them with the most need in the hope of, in future budgets, being able to expand that program. The eight instructional technology assistants, we do currently have ITAs, but we are requesting that we have additional ITAs. We have increased over six thousand devices in our schools from 2015, sixteen school year to now, without any additional support for those devices. And as we all know, it is really important to make sure they're all operating correctly in order for our students to have the access. So we would like to add additional ITAs so that we can make sure that all things are up and running, and our students have full engagement with those. At this time, I would like to turn over the next two slides over to Ms. Richardson. And Ms. Richardson will then expand upon our students with special needs and our requests coming for those students. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. You can see that we have a need, a growing need in special education. Our child count from 2016 to 2017 has increased by a hundred and fifty-seven students with disabilities. In that child count, we are currently serving three hundred and thirty-eight early childhood special education student needs. We are projecting that we will need four new ECSE classrooms. We would like to staff each of those classrooms with two additional paraeducators. The state staffing standard for ECSE requires that our teachers can serve no more than eight students at a time. Our projections coming from Pead, which is the program that services students from birth to age two, we are projecting to gain a hundred and thirty-eight more students that require early childhood special education services for 2018, nineteen. For Courthouse Academy, for those of you that aren't familiar with that, that is our public separate school for students with emotional disabilities. We currently have four classrooms out there. The staffing standard there, we're able to serve about ten students per case manager. We do have a full-time social worker that is assigned to Courthouse Academy. But you can also note that we have a growing need of placement of students with disabilities outside of our school division. We currently have about a hundred and four students placed. And of course, if we are able to grow Courthouse Academy, our projections are is that we can bring more students back and serve them here. Two speech pathologists, well, you know, our related services folks are very hard to find. And with our growing population of students just across the board, the need for related services, and especially speech-language pathologists, when you connect that to the growth that we've had in the area of students with autism, we have an increase from 2016 to 2017 of fifty students with autism. They do require more intensive related services. Thank you. That directly connects to the need for two more occupational therapists. As our child count grows, the overall needs, meeting the holistic needs of students with disability grows. And of course, with the impact that we've seen in our DD populations, our students with other health impairments and autism, the need for related services grows across the board. One teacher at Gateway with two paraeducators, for those of you that do not know, Gateway is our public separate school for students with autism. That's housed at John J. Wright Educational and Cultural Center, along with Courthouse Academy. When you think about the hundred and four students that we have placed outside of our school division, twenty-four of those students are students that are significantly impacted with autism spectrum disorders. So with the ability to grow Gateway, we have the potential to bring those students back to Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Our adaptive PE teacher, we are a force of one right now. So with our needs growing extensively across the school division, we have a need to increase that specialized support to our programs. And lastly, we do have the need for a signing assistant. We have a student with a disability that currently requires that support, and we are compensating that person hourly, and that is an ongoing need. And from what I understand from that family, they don't plan on leaving Spotsylvania. Thank you.
Are there any questions about the positions? Mr. Blain.
Last, the signing student, is that a federal requirement that we must do, fill that position? Is that what you're saying, or not necessarily?
That student is hearing impaired, so he requires the use of sign language to understand the instruction that's going on within the classroom. So yes, under IDEA, that is a required accommodation and support.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer.
From Mrs. Flannard, on page thirty-two, with the additional teachers noted for the Governor's Low Class Size Initiative, are those not being funded somewhat? The state funding that we're seeing, are those positions being accompanied with funding? I want to distinguish what's funded and what's unfunded.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. They are funded with the state money, but I am going to bounce that to finance, because I do know my limitations and my limitations end with finance, and they begin over there.
It's about five hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Okay. With the sixteen regular education teachers, have you already anticipated at the levels, elementary, middle, and high?
We do have some preliminary, but we also are not one hundred percent because of the anticipated growth, and we want to see the realization of that growth. But we do anticipate that right now, some are definitely going to be for the elementary because of some large classes currently that we're seeing, as well as the Low Class Size Initiative. And we also are noting some large classes at the high school as well. But we do anticipate fifth going to sixth, and so we have some of those as well. So we are seeing at every level that there's going to be a need.
You just don't know the numbers yet. Are you looking at, how you come up with sixteen, I guess, is how do you say it's sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two? You know?
That's a great question. And we actually used Don Uppercow's work with the Capital Improvement Plan, and we look at the projections. We look at what is going to go to the next grade, as far as just the natural matriculation of our students. We also look at our projections through the CIP and what is anticipated. Of course, kindergarten is a great unknown in that area. And then we also look at the standards of quality in regards to which class sizes can be higher than others, because they do have different limitations depending on the content.
Thank you.
I know that there's other questions, but I'm going to ask, as a follow-up to Dr. Meyer's question on the low-class size requirement or initiative at the early grades, finance. Can you just clarify again, because that began several years ago? Can you clarify, I know that we heard the exact amount of money. My follow-up, just reinforcement, is early on, I thought there was a match point to that, that it's not fully funded, but that we must, in order to receive that funding, keep those class sizes at a certain ratio. But we do not have them fully funded, along with our other needs. So can you break that down? Because I think his question may have also been about whether it was fully funded versus do we have funding in the budget to support it.
Portion, Dr. Meyer, is about five hundred and seventy-something thousand, and in terms of the local match, it's about three hundred and twenty-six thousand. So the key, though, too, is that you have to meet the requirement, because if you don't, then you won't receive the state funding. And we're working towards meeting it, of course.
Is that then set up similar to the early childhood, the VPI?
It is.
Okay.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Back to the same question about the Governor's Low Class Sizes. What schools? You mentioned four schools.
There's four additional schools.
Four additional schools, yes.
That's correct. So it would be all of our elementary schools except. How about I do that? Because there's really only four that are not.
Okay.
And those are Chancellor Elementary is not currently eligible, Brock Road Elementary, Courthouse Road Elementary, and Parkside Elementary.
And what qualifies a school for the low class size?
So my understanding, and finance certainly could chime in if I have this incorrect, is that the state takes the eligibility for our economically disadvantaged by school, and they look at that formula and determine what size class is appropriate in their determination of that factor. And so some of our schools will have lower class size than others based on their economically disadvantaged numbers. So for example, Berkeley Elementary School, Livingston Elementary, and Spotswood actually have lower within the low. So they do take a tiered approach, if you will, to how we should make our classes a lower size.
Okay. Thank you. Now then, one more question about the profile of Virginia graduate. With the internship piece that is coming, and then adding three counselors, but we have five high schools. So I'm just wondering, are we still supporting? Are we going to, the school's going to be supported with the number of students that are going to require an internship? And are any of the counselors, are we looking at any career counselors? Are we looking at school counselors? Are they the same thing? That's my question.
Thank you. Actually, currently, our school counselors are required to teach careers and career expectations. And beginning in the middle school, our counselors actually create and start to develop goals and plans with our students. So to answer your question about counselors and do they have a perspective on careers, the answer is that is yes. That currently exists. And because we are looking at just beginning profile of a graduate next year, that is why we're looking at the potential of having three. A couple of slides ago, there was anticipated increase for the next couple of years. We're thinking that we could hopefully add additional counselors as we move forward with profile of a graduate, because we're looking at eighth grade going to ninth grade as one class that is going to begin those expectations. So as those students matriculate up, we would certainly look to request additional counselors to support the greater needs.
Ms. Phelps.
I have a quick question. The social workers on here, how many social workers do we have right now?
We currently have fifteen social workers that are employed by Spotsylvania County Schools, and we contract for seven, in addition to the fifteen.
Are those at certain levels, elementary, middle, or?
All across the levels.
They all share?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Dr. Meyer.
A follow-up on funding. With the requirements coming off of the new attendance law, was there anything in the financial detail from the governor that added dollars to implement that attendance law? We talked about it when it was presented. I was curious if it showed, anything showed up in the detail? Because it's going to turn up being an unfunded mandate.
I have it before me, Dr. Meyer, and I don't see anything, but I can't follow up with VDOE if you would like me to.
Mrs. Gaines, I've looked at it.
If they put it into the detail, because sometimes it's all in the detail, not in all the numbers. They just say it's included in basic aid.
And just again, I think thematic through this conversation, and just as a reminder to all of the board, that the methodology that the state uses has been in existence for a long time. What I outlined on Monday night about both the need for and challenge of providing equitable services with stringent money requirements, meaning that sometimes we have to put money exactly where the methodology directs it, and it does not always account for what we may see as the leaders, as the staff members in the school, as to where resources are best placed at a given time. And I think to the profile of a graduate, there are many initiatives that are part of a larger movement or framework or- of a larger movement or framework or education reform and improvement across the state that will never be funded to the expectation level that they have in terms of performance. And I share that because I think a lot of the questions about whether we're getting the funding for that, we're getting a lot of funding, but in terms of the needs, they're not, it's not funded need for need. And I share that for the whole board, because I know that we all go through different levels of understanding, and when we come back in the budget, I think that makes it a challenge. We would certainly want, and I, so last thing I'll say is, is you continue to look as a board at legislative priorities in the future, and this also includes federal funding, is to continue to urge flexibility, if not more, funding. Because with flexibility comes the opportunity to maximize it at the local level, which becomes very difficult when it is already predetermined where it must go or you do not receive it.
Mr. Blaine, you had a question still?
I think my question kind of ties these things together, in my mind, anyway. We're outlining a significant number of people to hire and to augment and to fill real needs, there's no question about that. Given the availability of trained professionals in the United States today, we read every day that there's an increasing shortage of teachers. And we're going to, some, many of our needs fit into that category. How is this, based on your recent hiring last for this year, as you got, tried to fill out our staff, how does salaries and the other things that we talked about initially connect these?
I think everyone's looking around. What they're probably thinking is, the superintendent tried on Monday night, but, and I know you don't mean that, Mr. Blaine, but I failed to articulate how we are trying to address these number one and two, the number one and two objectives to the compensation, certainly the compensation piece in terms of remaining competitive to help draw folks to do this business in Spotsylvania County, as well as keeping the good folks that we have, knowing that their work is the most valued aspect of public education and of our school division. So that is, again, the significant reason why we're doing that, thinking that that will make a difference and helping us to stay ahead of the curve, particularly with the shortages. And I outlined on Monday night the shortage in the area of teachers. But there are shortages in a number of categories. In fact, I, every time an area comes up, it seems to fall, or has fallen, in a critical shortage area, and some for a number of years. So the compensation piece is a big part of that. A reminder that we are trying to, again, take the long view, instead of the one-year-at-a-time budgeting dilemma that we found ourselves trapped in due to many conditions that are beyond the board's control. We are trying to look forward and begin to keep these priorities for a period of years, which will drive a number of things in terms of not only this budget, but future planning. I asked our staff, when they came to me through this process, when you see that there are a minimum of a hundred and twenty positions that we would like to see over a three-year period, those were presented in this year's budget as recommended for next year. And being idealistic, but also knowing the fiscal realities, I thought we would be better off seeing what we can use the most right now and trying to build it over time. So you have to view those resources as not just next year, but trying to continue to accumulate them, to use them as a system. And then the last thing that I think, not only to the compensation, but additional resources that go across the gamut. It's, if you are a classroom teacher today, and there are many here in the audience, so I don't want to speak completely for them, but they do have to be responsible now for much more than simply, I have a content or a grade level or academics to teach. I must do many more things than that to even enable some children, if not the majority of children, to be able to even access learning. And so as those increase, we want folks that are doing that work, teachers, leaders in our schools, to have as much support as they can get to, we want to leverage as many resources as we can to make the job that they're hired to do, the primary business of teaching and learning, that they can direct their attention more that way. So I think all of these are intended to work in concert. And so I don't think they can be looked at in isolation. So if you're looking at social workers and counselors, there's overlap in what they're going to be able to provide. It's integrated. When you look at an administrative intern, being able to come and provide, we get dual benefits from that, both to train folks within for future opportunities and build capacity, but we also free up folks in leadership to provide more instructional support and instructional leadership. So it's really about, it's not always just about the specific position, but it's how these positions can work in concert for our system to move to the appropriate levels of service. So that was long, but I didn't do well on Monday, so I'm trying to bring that back, if that makes any sense.
It does, and it is repetitive, I recognize that, and that's just fine, because I think that's what we're trying to point out. This September, when schools started, there are many divisions in Virginia that did not have the bodies to fill a lot of positions. And that goes back to money in many, many cases, and I just wanted to emphasize that fact. Thank you.
It also, the last soapbox moment, it also goes to folks wanting to enter the profession to begin with. So I showed you earlier on Monday how we don't have the number of folks even entering programs to accommodate the enrollment in the state of Virginia. So when folks talk about a shortage, it's a statistical shortage, it's actual. And so what I would hope for and try to build in our system is that we not only draw people that are already wanting to do it, but we have to even begin, as a system, to encourage our students and folks in our profession to say, and this is really the idealistic part of it, I'm so glad I do this profession, because I do it in Spotsylvania, and they provide resources and they provide value, and I am making a difference in lives, and I think more and more people should want to do this.
And we want the high school graduate to be at that point, to say, I'll choose education. Thank you.
Well, and last thing, you brought it up, and you'll never bring it up again now, but we also have a plan that's not in here, but I think our future in terms of providing pathways at the high school level that translate into the future workforce is to build a teacher cadet program here. It's not in the immediate for next year, but we do hope that eventually we are helping to send students outside of high school with some credentials to begin that work to become a teacher and an educator.
Mr. Twig?
And along the same subject, and maybe sidebar to the physical present tense budget on the same subject, I, an observation over several decades of watching job turns in America and economies, and present tense choice of professions, I think it's, generally speaking, a wise choice to start thinking of creative ways to hiring temporary employees. There are a lot of people, semi-retired, a few specialists, that could give you, plus years of experience in various disciplines, but not a teaching certificate, that would be willing to give anywhere from two weeks to six months of their time. And at that point, if you could find those people, I think it behooves, if and as they step forward in this community, I think it behooves our administration, as well as this present tense board, to begin thinking about that, such that how could we fill a void instead of having a lapse of thirty teachers, which I think Stafford has about a thirty teacher shortage right now? If I were in administration or on that board, I'd be saying, let's fill those positions and let's get creative on how we can do that. I don't know what state law reads, but I think that, I'd like to think that it would support that, and if not, maybe it's a, you know, speak to our legislator issue. But that said, I have another couple of comments, but does anybody want to respond to what I just said?
I was just going to respond. It was one of our legislative priorities this year in our legislative packet. That's not up to us as a school board. It is up to a state certification, and the new state leader of our education system, I brought it up at the Capitol Conference that we just went to, that he's going to focus on trying to make those requirements easier for us to be able to do, hire professionals that are not education certified.
Right, now.
But that is not something that us or our administration has control over.
Present tense, we don't have the capability of doing that within our power.
That is correct, within our power. But we have added it to our legislative agenda. It was, and I am lobbying every day.
Again, I apologize for the time it takes, but is that a near-future thing, or is it just a discussion thing that might go nowhere? Do you have any perception on that?
I hope there is nothing bill-related that is promising. Dr. Baker?
I think that there's the legislative aspect of it, but I think that within the broader educational community, what you're sharing, Mr. Twig, is something that we're hearing from a lot of folks. We talk about longstanding state methodology. We have longstanding certification requirements, and some of them are certainly necessary, but we need, and I'll use that word again, we need at the local level more flexibility to both train some of our own folks and to bring people into the profession that may have some of the prerequisite skills that are needed, but they don't meet all of the specific credit requirements. And so we need the help of the state, and it is part of a larger conversation that's going on with some urgency in the entire educational community as well at the legislative level. So I think it's, to Ms. Graham's point, you're addressing it as a board, but we're continuing to address it in leadership across the state. So thank you for recognizing it.
Mr. Baswell?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I concur with Mr. Twig's concern, and I also understand that what Ms. Graham said, that that can't be really solved at this level. However, the statistics are clear that the baby boom generation is retiring at ten thousand people per day. Eventually, we will have a significant workforce that's retired, and they're looking for encore careers. And so we're going to have to look at the way we certify teachers to accommodate that group. I once gave this proposition to Dr. Baker in jest. I told him that I've been working in financial services for well over twenty-five years, and at some point, I would like to retire. And if I retired, I would still feel young enough that I would want to contribute in some way, and I would consider or would have a great desire to be a counselor. After all, my community work is in counseling young people. And with my current educational background, I would not be qualified, which I think is absolutely crazy. And I think that young people would be able to take full advantage of what I would have to offer. And so I think from the state level, they need to look at, how do we accommodate this large group of retirees that will be looking to be engaged with our young people and in our school systems, so that we can relax some of the standards that are formalized, that we handcuff our own selves with, so that we could use them as multipliers instead of saying they're not qualified? So I know that's just a soapbox, there's no one on this board that can solve that particular problem, but I think it's a very real concern.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Twig?
Follow-on, different subject. Of the, I think it was seven contracted, was it counselors? Is that Compass, social workers? Was that Compass? Or is there a variety of contractors?
No, they come from Family Solutions, not Compass Counseling.
Thank you very much. And on slide thirty-six, transportation, how many of our forty-three point five personnel is vehicle maintenance? Is that like thirty or sixty? Slide thirty-six. Fine, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay, so back to what we were talking about, the positions. Just to add to the soapbox that Barron got to contribute to, I've told this story at this very work session every year, but my neighbor wrote the economics book that we use in our economics classes. She's unable to teach it, because she has a PhD in economics and a professor at Mary Washington College, but had to go through the certification classes from the state just to be able to teach her own economics book part-time in our schools. So, yes, we all wrote the book, author name on the book, but couldn't work for our school system because of the state requirements. So we, year after year, have been bringing that up, and we now know it's on the radar, but there's nothing currently in the legislation, currently that I've read that's going to help lessen that. But hopefully in the next year or so, it'll get done. But as far as the positions go, I, we got this PowerPoint presentation earlier this afternoon, and so I called my budget people for the state budget and my budget people from the federal budget, and went through our positions, and went through our descriptions, and went through our dollars. And thirty-seven of our positions are mandated and unfunded, and nine of our positions are mandated and partially funded. So I would just like to say that most of that is a response to mandates, and again, we aren't getting the funding that we need. If there are no other questions on positions, we could move on to slide forty, thirty-six.
Hey, thank you so much, Mr. Twig. In looking at slide thirty-six, in terms of the number of vehicle maintenance employees, it's nineteen FTEs. The other comments that I wanted to share on this particular slide, we always like to put before our board where we are with our FTEs. With the sixty positions that were proposed by Dr. Baker, that would bring our FTE count up to thirty-one eighty-eight. And in looking at that number, that's about seventy-four percent in instruction. You'll basically see the fifty positions there. The two that you see in administration, attendance, and health, those are occupational therapists that Ms. Richardson just spoke of. And then you'll see in technology, the eight ITAs. So that's a total of sixty. And the answer to your question is nineteen.
Mrs. Gaines, if you could continue with the health insurance strategies.
All right. Okay, thank you, Ms. Graham. Before moving into this section, I do want to acknowledge that we do have Mr. Lee Deskins in the audience, and he serves as the healthcare consultant for both the schools as well as the county. So he's here to speak and, as well as share information and respond to inquiries. We want to first indicate that when you look here at the three-year health insurance plan that we started last year, our number one goal is to make sure that we do provide our employees with quality benefits at an affordable cost. The other thing that we've been working on with the Employee Compensation Focus Group is to look at where we are from a budgetary standpoint. And one of the things that we have been able to recognize is that we're eighty-five percent salaries and benefits. So with that being the case, and Dr. Baker wanting to recommend to the school board that we provide salary increases, we have to look to see where is the capacity. So with that, I want to go ahead and go to slide thirty-eight. When you look at slide thirty-eight, our actual health insurance budget is about thirty-eight million dollars. With the Compensation Focus Group that Dr. Baker put in place almost three years ago, the first year we did save, the second year we did save one point eight million dollars. And you have some slides behind this one that will give you the details of that. For FY nineteen and working with the committee, we're looking at some potential savings of another one point eight. So your cumulative health insurance savings is three point six million. So again, that shows you that the staff is always looking for ways to gain efficiencies. I am going to ask Mr. Treier to hand out to you a benefit plan design comparison sheet. And on the sheet, you're going to basically see comparisons between Stafford. In many cases, they are used as a benchmark for Spasylvania. Also, you will see comparative data for Spasylvania County Government. And then we want to share with you a little bit about the premium rates, just to provide some comparisons. So the first sheet that you'll see that he has passed out is called the Benefit Comparison Spasylvania Schools, Government, and Stafford Schools. This is for the current year. So when you look at it, when you look at the gray column, you're basically looking at Spasylvania County Schools. The next column is Spasylvania County Government. And then you'll see Stafford Schools. One of the main things I want to point out, if you look at the deductibles, you'll see it's 100 individual and 200 family. If you go across to the county, you'll see zero and zero. And then when you look at Stafford, you'll see 200 and 400. So again, for Spasylvania, our deductibles is one of the lowest. The other one I want to point out is if you look at row 15, it basically says out-of-pocket maximums. For Spasylvania, the out-of-pocket maximum is 1,000 for an individual and 2,000 for family. As you work your way across, you'll see for the county, you'll see much higher deductibles or out-of-pocket maximums, 3,000 for individual and 6,000 for family. And then also for Stafford, you'll see an out-of-pocket of 3,000 and 6,000. So in working with Anthem, one of the things that they recommended is that we look at modernizing our health insurance plans. Because in most cases, our plans are very rich. And with them being very rich, we have something called adverse selection, whereby we have individuals come onto our plans when they probably do have an opportunity to secure coverage from another plan. So I just wanted to point that out there. When you look at your next handout, this is a side-by-side comparison of Spasylvania County Schools, County, and Stafford. So when you look at Spasylvania for 2017, 2018, keep in mind, these rates are only for medical because the rates coming from Stafford and Spasylvania are only medical. So for 2017, 2018, for employee-only, you will see a monthly premium of 138.21 based on some information that we will share with you this evening. The medical increase, you'll see 193.16. But if you take note of Stafford Schools, you'll see how their premium is $53. And that is because their plan design is not as rich as Spasylvania. So what they did last year, they basically joined efforts with their county government, and they significantly lowered the plan design offerings. When I say plan design, I'm referring to things such as co-pays, deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums. So what happens is the employees pay a lower premium payroll contribution each month, and then they pay the additional amount when they go to access the services. So we wanted to point that piece out. And then lastly, when you look at the last one, which is highlighted in green, you will see employee, medical, and dental premiums, and you'll also see what the employer is paying, being Spasylvania. So when you look here, if I draw your attention to the last two columns, you'll see for Key Care Expanded, the employee-only, employee contribution percent is 30%, and the employer is 77%. Then if I take you to Key Care 500, you'll basically see here that the contribution for the employee is 12%. And then for the county, being us, it's 89%. So those are just some highlights we wanted to point out before we walk you through the next few slides. So these are given to you as future opportunities for review. So we walked through some of the slides, just to give you some content. When you look at Spasylvania, roughly, we have about 3,100 employees. When you look at these 3,100 employees, we have about 2,300 that are on our plan, which equates to about 73%, and which means you have 27% of your employees who are not on your health plan. When you look at our actual plans that we do offer, we offer three in total, and you'll see that 65% of our employees are on the richest plan or the most robust plan. You have about 6% that are on Key Care 200, and you have about 29% that are on Key Care 500. I also wanted to draw your attention to the different tiers that we have based on work that was done by the Employee Compensation Focus Group. You'll see that employee-only, 43% of our employees are on that plan across all plans. When you look at employee plus one, 14% are on that tier. When you look at family, 36% are on that tier. And this is plan data as of October 1st, 2017, which is the current year. The next slide that we want to draw to your attention is that over the years, you can see that our health insurance rate increases are very volatile, the highest one being in 2013, which is 20.3%, with the lowest one being in 2017, which was 0%. The year that we're in currently, we saw a 5.3% rate increase for the employer. And based on the information that we're going to be sharing momentarily, for the employer, we're looking at a 0% increase. And what that does is that allows us to reallocate those fundings into the compensation proposal that Dr. Baker presented to you on Monday night. So as we get into some of the numbers here, employer, employee contribution, you can kind of see that the school board does pay a lion's share of that. If you were to look at maybe averages across maybe the state, you're normally at about 80/20. We're a little bit higher for Key Care 500. Based on the proposals that we're going to present to you this evening for 2019, you will see Key Care Expanded will go from 25% being the employee contribution to 23, and the employer being 77% versus the current, which is 75%. So we just want you to be familiar with those contribution ratio trends. So what did we do last year? You will recall, with the savings of 1.8 million, we were able to renegotiate our prescription drug costs with Anthem. We also increased our stop-loss coverage from 150,000 to 200,000. That saved alone 450,000. We did debundle medical and dental coverage. And then for the dental rate, our employees assumed 25%, whereas for the last four years, the 100% of the dental rate was being paid by the school board. So we want to kind of give you a quick recap. So with the Employee Compensation Focus Group that was co-led this year by myself and Michelle, we did have four meetings in total, maybe about 20, 25 members. And every meeting, we were very, very engaged. And so some of their suggestions that came out of that work. Number one, in looking at Key Care Expanded and Key Care 500, they were suggesting that Dr. Baker consider increasing the employee contributions for savings of about $740,000. So that's item number one. Item number two, they did recommend that we add a tier. Because right now, we have employee-only, we have employee-plus-one, which could be employee-plus-child, or it could be employee-plus-spouse. Based on research that we've done, when you look at the claims of an adult, that normally comes in two to three times that amount of a child. So therefore, it does make sense to have an employee-spouse premium. Because what you do in essence, you spread the risk. Also, in looking at some of our peers, they do have an employee-plus-spouse, both Stafford as well as the county and other school districts. Another option that we looked at was modifying the prescription drug card, which would save $605,000. And you can see below what that would actually look like. So for the current year, tier one, the prescription cost is $10. Tier two is 20. Tier three is 35. And tier four, not applicable because we currently don't have that. So in looking at 2019, we would keep with the same 10. Tier two would be 30. Tier three would be 45. And then tier four, which would be a brand-new cap, it would not exceed 200. So the number of employees impacted would be about 76. So we wanted to make sure you knew that. And then for item number two, the number of families impacted for employee-spouse, that would be about 386. Also, the committee did recommend that we eliminate Key Care 200. Because when you look at Key Care 200, less than 6% are on that plan. Okay? So those are some of the recommendations coming out of the committee for 2019. You can look at what you see for 2020. One of the things they had talked about was that they do not believe that we're in a position in 2019 to move forward with a health savings account, high deductible health plan, primarily because this summer will be a very short summer, and we will need more lead time to educate our employees. You're going to be in a situation where in August, we're going to be starting school. You're going to have new teachers coming on board, and you're going to have open enrollment. So what we would like to do in 2019 is to start the campaign of the educational sessions for the high deductible health plan. We would also like to start the campaign for looking at how we can bring additional doctors and physicians into the network. So you'll see those. Then also, because it's a three-to-five-year plan, they looked at increasing the network in 2021 because you want to give your employees more lead time. And in 2022, focus on wellness programs and possibly an onsite clinic. So that kind of brings us to something that we really want to share with you this evening. In terms of the proposal coming from the Employee Compensation Focus Group, they were totally 100% consensus, let's go ahead and add an employee-plus-spouse tier. By doing that, you do save $500,000. The other option was to increase our premiums by 500,000 and then to increase the premiums by 1 million. In Dr. Baker's proposal, it does include increasing the premiums to save a total of $1.8 million. Okay? And that $1.8 million includes eliminating Key Care 200, which there's no savings. It does include revising your prescription card, which does save you 605,000. And it does include increasing the employee contributions. So when you look here, employee-only, in 2018, medical and dental, they're paying $146.48 per month. 2019, that will go up to $201.43. So that is a monthly increase of $55. Then if you look at employee-plus-one, you'll see they're currently paying 402. That will go up to $502, a $100 increase per month. It does make sense with the employee-spouse, you will see a larger increase, going from 403 up to $661. That would be a monthly increase of 258. Keep in mind, that would be about 386 families that would be impacted. We do have the family shared, and then we do have the family. Now, when you look at Key Care 500, this particular plan currently, they're paying per month, employee-only, $30.77. That would go up to $80.62 for a monthly increase of $50. And again, you can see the other increases. Now, you may be in a situation where an employee may say, based on where I am, I am going to move from Key Care Expanded, and I'm going to move on to the Key Care 500 plan. If they were to consider that based on their family needs, they would actually go from paying $146 per month down to $81 per month, and they would have a savings of $65 per month. You still would have a slight increase for the employee-plus-spouse, which would be the $17 per month. So one of the things that we have talked about is that there is a need for us to educate our employees. Because in a lot of instances, we have employees who are on Key Care Expanded, and they're paying a higher premium each month because they don't want to take on that additional risk. But if you look at it, they're actually paying payroll contributions that they could be setting aside and use those funds when they actually utilize the service. But in order for them to realize that, we as an organization will need to educate them. So that's one of the things we want to also start to do in '19. Then the question might be, looking at Dr. Baker's proposal, if you look at employee-only, because that was one of the recommendations that the Employee Compensation Focus Group looked at, if you're going to do a comparison between pay and monthly benefit, focus on the employee. So for those employees who are Key Care Expanded, they're on the employee-only tier, their monthly increase would be about $55. So if you look at what employees would be negatively impacted on their paycheck, if you get a 4% increase, you would have 171 employees who would be negatively impacted, or 6% of the total staff. Keep in mind, you do have about 27% who are not on our plan at all, which means if you get a 4% pay raise, 94% of our employees would not be negatively impacted. If we're able to give a 3% pay raise, that number does go up slightly. You go up from the 191 employees to 378, or 12% of the employees being negatively impacted. For those employees who receive a 2%, it goes up even further to 601 employees, or 20% being negatively impacted, with 80% not being negatively impacted. So we did want to share that with you because I know that that was one of the comments that had come out of the principals' meeting. If you do increase premiums, will that have a negative impact on my pay? So we wanted to share that with you. And again, just again, some highlights in terms of the comparison with the plan design. And then we'll be happy to take any questions that you might have. Because there may be an alternative. Some board members may say this increase for our employees is too aggressive. Is there a way that we can consider looking at additional plan designs? So we just gave you some examples here that we could work with Anthem between now and Monday to say, how much could we save by looking at increasing our out-of-pocket maximums? Right now, that is $1,000. Another question could be, what if we were to increase co-pays? And what if we were to increase deductibles? How much could we save? And you may be interested in a hybrid approach. So at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
If I might, before we go to questions, I know the board will have many. I just wanted to frame a few things. First, I want to again thank the Compensation Focus Group, the individuals that were co-led by Ms. Gaines and Ms. Culbert to try to give us, you know, the range of perspectives from employee groups that are affected by not only what we're able to do with compensation, but also, you know, along with that, what we can have to do in terms of benefits. I think for, when I came here as superintendent, the expanded plan was one that I think the employees, by and large, not only appreciated, but I think that in surveys, wanted to maintain it even if the, you know, they had to pay more to keep it. At the same time, I know that we are, the reality, the fiscal reality is that we have to be able to gain ground in terms of employee compensation with a limited amount of dollars. And so we're trying to find that balance between providing the highest-quality benefit package for our employees who need it and deserve it, and at the same time, realize what's feasible and sustainable in terms of cost, especially if we want to not only implement year one of what has been proposed Monday and this evening, but over a three-year period. I think, I don't know that there's anyone at this table or anyone that's been a part of the Focus Group that was sharing that wouldn't like to just say, let's keep everything exactly as it is with the health insurance and simply find a way to raise pay for every employee. And you'll see that over a two-year period, based on what's been proposed, we and you as a board have been able to, if you maintain this recommendation, have reduced the, basically, the employee or employer share of the health insurance by over $3 million, $3.5 million. I also think that you have to digest and analyze this individually and collectively to determine whether you have other thoughts or ideas in moving forward. Because when we begin to move forward, I think as Ms. Gaines laid out, we're talking again about a multi-year process of redesigning the health insurance benefits. And so every step you take is part of a larger, more complex picture. And I just encourage you to thoughtfully and carefully look at those. And we've, I think, provided explicitly what we know to be the impact because it impacts all of our employees in some way. So I want to thank you for doing that, and I know we're open to question. And we do have Mr. Deskins here, who is our consultant with Anthem, who may be able to go a little bit deeper with some aspects of board planning for the future.
Before we go to questions, I just want to thank as a board member how every year we have the opportunity to have an health insurance briefing and we have somebody here from Anthem to answer our questions because that keeps us very informed and aware of what our health insurance situation is. Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of health insurance, I am really excited about our long-range plan to modernize our health insurance so that we would have options that are innovative and provide employees greater choice. The opportunity to put that in place is going to pay great dividends for us in out-years. The key to their success, however, will be education. A lot of people are afraid of things, they don't know how they work. And health savings accounts would be a great value add to our platform for providing health insurance for our employees. They just have to have a good understanding of how they work and feel comfortable that it's going to meet their and their family's needs. But not only that, through the education, that it's beneficial to them not only in short-term premium, but the opportunity to have control over their own premium dollars in out-years. So I'm glad that we're having that discussion and we're planning to look down the road to provide some innovative health plans. But in the short run, we know that we have to look at the plan design and there are some tweaks that we could probably make to save some premium. Now, I was looking at our, just the small item of our office co-pay. We have a 15 office co-pay, 25 specialist co-pay. And I would argue that the savings that we could probably get by just increasing the co-pay would be significant and it would not have a major impact on the lives of anyone, especially if we offered a little sweetener to the deal and gave a gentle nudge towards the 500 Plan, the Key Care 500, by providing more of an incentive to do that because we want people to move in that direction anyway. Incentives are very powerful. In 15 days, we will have and celebrate Valentine's Day. And Baron Braswell intends to bring a very large bouquet of flowers and a lot of candy to influence the desired outcome. And there's nothing wrong with an incentive to help our employees make a decision that's not only good for them, but also good for the division as a whole. So I want to thank you for that. I'd ask that you look into looking at the design and see if there are some ways that just the small tweaks of the co-pay and any other deductibles would help us save money. Thank you.
Mrs. Phillips?
So I have a question. I was looking at the Spotsy versus the schools, county, and then Stafford schools. Did I hear you say that Stafford County and the schools combine their services? So that's how we have the green column and why there's a big difference?
So two things, Ms. Velp, very good question. I want to say it was almost about seven years ago where Spotsylvania County Schools and Spotsylvania County Government also entered into a joint RFP process for health insurance. When we did that, we did save 300,000 and just been a great business partner. Those funds were maintained by the county. With that, one of the things that we did, we still kept a separate plan design because we're attracting different types of employees. We also kept separate premium contributions. Now, what Stafford has done, they basically looked at trying to have the same plan design, but different contribution rates. So they were able to save just as we were able to save, but in order to go forward, there are no additional savings that we can incur unless we change the plan design. And that kind of goes back to what Mr. Braswell just shared. And we're moving in that direction.
Have we ever done a benefit-dependent audit?
So what we've done, we were working with a company by the name of Wells Fargo and they were basically doing like a national survey and we also have information from VEA just to look to see, how do our benefits compare to other benefits? We've done that and that's pretty much all that we've done. But dependent audits in terms of working with the HR department, yes, they do. In terms of checking the paperwork and verification, yes. Is that, is there something different?
I'll just listen.
Are you speaking about us ensuring that they are true dependents on our plan? Spouses, et cetera? We do, when you add a spouse, you are required to provide documentation and also the children, especially if there's different last names, we do require documentation.
Have you guys, so you guys have never sat down and looked at that? Like went back and looked through to see where there was some savings, if there could be some savings with maybe different situations that occur?
If we identify that the individuals are not true dependents, then of course, they're not allowed to be a part of our insurance. And when they're not a part of our insurance, then if they had claims, those claims would no longer be a part of our bill. So if that has occurred, then yes.
Any more questions on the health insurance standpoint? At my.
So what we have, what has been presented this evening, as Dr. Baker has included in his recommended budget. So you're also asking us tonight if there's any tweaks that we would like to see considered for additional savings over and beyond what's been incorporated here?
So I'm going to draw your attention back. That's a very good question, Dr. Meyer. Back to page 43 because I think that is where you would see a good summary of what's currently included in Dr. Baker's budget and based on the work that has been done by the employee compensation focus group. So item number one, in looking at the employee contributions going up for both the Key Care Expanded and Key Care 500, the employer being Spotsylvania would save 742,000. And working with the committee, they were in favor of those increases because they talked about how at this point, they gravely value the Key Care Expanded Plan and they're willing to pay more. The other part of that is that they know in the next two to three years or so, we're are going to be moving more towards more significant plan design changes. When you look at item number two, they were totally in agreement with adding the employee spouse tier, that will save 500,000. So we're pretty solid on number two. We're pretty solid on number three. If you guys are too, in terms of modifying the prescription drug costs, that would save 605,000. So the total savings here is 1.8. So the question is this. Number one, as a board, do you feel comfortable with the recommendations that have been included in Dr. Baker's budget? What you can do, you can add to those or you can take from those. And simultaneously, what I've heard from Mr. Braswell is to go out and look at plan design changes, look at co-pays and deductibles to find out what additional savings can be garnered. What you can do from that, if there, let's say, for example, if you revise your deductible, let's say you double that and we're able to save 300,000. You can take that and say, I will keep the 1.5 that Dr. Baker currently has in his budget and we can add another 300,000 to be at 2.1. Or you can say, I want to take that 300,000 savings in plan design and I want to reduce the increase in the employee contribution. So to save 1.8. So you can do a hybrid approach as well. But whatever you need, it would be helpful if you can share that with us this evening and then that way we can go to Anthem, have them do the additional calculations and bring that back to you on Monday.
I apologize. And again, I appreciate not only the request from Dr. Meyer as to direction for direction, but I am, and again, I appreciate that Ms. Gaines is a taskmaster and wants action and wants some information so that finance can begin to do its work to prepare a budget for the 12th. I want to share a different part of that or maybe a different direction. I wanted to make sure tonight you knew that ultimately you are going to have the option of either maintaining the current recommendation moving forward or add your thoughts to it. It is, if you feel differently as a board, please let me know, but I believe you may need some further time to digest what you have received tonight. And at the Monday work session, might be a more appropriate time to solidify any recommendations. You do not have to go with that recommendation, but I would say that tonight to either have a definitive may not be appropriate, given again, the amount of information and the complexity. You may want to take a little bit more time, especially since what Mr. Braswell did refer to is a next year or longer-term endeavor. So I would certainly take a recommendation tonight, but would encourage you maybe to take the better part of this week and the weekend and then on Monday, we can resume the discussion.
Ms. Shelley?
Dr. Baker, thank you for that explanation. But just to get more information, I kind of just wanted numbers. You had mentioned a hybrid because there are some people, due to health concerns, might need to stay on the Expanded and that might be the best option for them. Yet if the co, it might not be as much of a, it might not cost them as much if we raised the deductibles a little bit. Because you had mentioned there could be a hybrid where maybe we could reduce some from their premium and then maybe have a higher deductible. I don't know if there's some, if Anthem has a calculation on just an average, if the reduced, if there was a reduced premium but raised deductible or co-pay? If there's an equal balance in how much somebody would be paying? My main concern is that out-of-pocket in the very beginning coming from their paycheck, 200, 100, whatever it is, that's a lot of money. And even though they might be getting a pay raise, it might still, it's not going to look like much because of that. And that's usually what I hear as the complaint is their health, you know, people's health insurance has gone up. But if we do go with this, because you had mentioned educating the employees and Mr. Braswell mentioned educating the employees, that's my biggest concern is making sure that we educate them prior to open enrollment, when they have to make that decision, that they know that, and I'll just use myself as an example, my premium is not very low, but I'm on the bottom of the bottom insurance plans because thank the Lord, I've been very healthy. So I don't have a lot of co-pays and I never reached my deductible. But for someone who is not healthy, that might not be the case. So they might end up having to spend more. So I just want to make sure that our employees are being, you know, they're not spending too much, yet it's really not, I guess I'm just going to stop there. I just want to make sure they're not spending too much. But if they're spending too much because they're on the wrong plan, I want them to know that too. Because if somebody's on Expanded and then go to 500 and save over 100 a month, they need to know that as well.
Mr. Lee Deskins, we've had several meetings with him and he does have like a gauge. If you want him to come forward, he can kind of share with you a little bit of what that looks like. We talked about what would be the price if we were to double the deductible and maybe look at some co-pays.
I apologize again, I'm sorry. And I appreciate Mr. Deskins being here and I'm hoping maybe that he could also be here on Monday. But again, I think for the sake of clarity, I will first answer, yes, we're going to be putting that education plan proactively in place, especially going in to open enrollment this year because we have made more substantial changes over the last two years than really in recent history. So I think that's a yes. But the other part is, I think that we're going, you have mentioned a number of different possibilities as to what else could be done as well as other board members. I know that we would need time for any sort of an analysis of those. So I would recommend versus trying to ballpark things hypothetically right now, that if you and any other board member that has a question or would like a cost-out potential scenario, to provide that to our staff and we can provide it to Mr. Deskins and Anthem for some support. And then on Monday, we can have that presented all at the same time. Just my recommendation and I'm sorry, Mr. Deskins, it's not that I don't want you to speak, it's just I want to make sure that, you know, we use the time appropriately.
Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Gaines, I'm Mr. Deskins. Thanks for the, because we're doing a shift. Even what's recommended here by the superintendent is a shift. And I think it's going to require a lot of education as we go through this. We started it last year and this is one step in that process. Because we're taking a look at how can we shift away from the more robust plan? If people don't need that plan, can they operate and save? We've also looked at shifting from, taking a higher premium with a low deductible versus a lower premium and a higher deductible. It's two different ways of accomplishing what you're trying to have for your family. And we have to educate our employees that there are options out there and no matter which option, it does cost, but there can be some savings. And the trade-off is if you are paying less on your premium and you're going with a higher deductible or a co-pay, that you have more dollars in your pocket each month, that the employee can decide what's the best way to use those dollars. It's somewhat like the health savings account, that same concept. And it's going to take a year, I would say, to educate our employees that we are shifting and we're asking employees to take a look at that shift because they could save money if they're willing to take on some of the burden of, you know, how they're expending, you know, their, for the doctor visits, et cetera, you know, prescriptions and whatever. They have to take on more of the onus of having a plan. And I think what we're seeing is exactly what you've been trying to do, started it last year. We had asked that you take a look at plan design and that when you're shifting, that's a plan design change. And you've incorporated part of that here. I agree with Mr. Braswell, you know, the other steps are going to be as we go down the road as now take a look at the deductible, which you can see when you take a look at Stafford. They're on a 200, 400, we're on a 100, 200. You can compare the two. Take a look at the co-pays, you can see the difference. And in those, all those pieces and take a look at out-of-pocket, all three play together. And it corresponds to what you do with a premium. You go higher premium, lower, lower premium, higher, or you're taking on more risk. And I think we need to educate our employees on that. I think you've done a good job and laid out a good proposal for us, a good recommendation. And as you looked at out-of-years, you know, where we need to be going. And I know that we had the conversation last year with Anthem, looking down the road at HMO as one way, another tool and toolbox, you know, besides the ones we've talked about tonight. And all those things, we work at it gradually, not try to do a major shift, do shifts gradually and then educate our employees on these things. I think, I want to congratulate you for coming up with a good recommendation. I think it is a very good, solid recommendation. And I think it does set the stage for future changes where we can elect to modify the plan and give our employees more options, where they, we can then redirect the funds that would normally be spent and then can go into compensation, which allows the employee to be able to make choices. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
Just a short comment. And the implementation of our more innovative programs, three, four years out, it may not be a bad idea to have a control group that you can not only allow them to go through the process, but then you can glean any... the process, but then you can glean any lessons learned, so that that can be shared with the entire division, and that way, it makes implementation a lot easier, because people will have an opportunity to see if there's any pitfalls, or have testimonies of, of things that they found beneficial.
Mrs. Phelps.
I have a quick question. I know that it says the, on slide 45, the onsite clinic, and I know it was discussed last year, probably the year before, because of the sustainability of our insurance. And has that been looked at?
And I believe that's why so far into the future, 2022, this was actually, we were approached by Mr. Taylor, the county administrator, and he had indicated that if we were to pursue something like this, he would be interested to see what could be the benefits for both county employees as well as schools. So with us really focusing this year on like plan designs and employee contributions, we really did not talk very heavily about the onsite clinic, but in future years, we will.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. We are going to pause this agenda, now that we've gotten the health insurance thing, with homework to forward, any questions that we have specific to health insurance for Monday, because we don't have many slides left for Monday's work session, because we have legal counsel here to join us for closed session, so in order to stay, stay remotely on schedule, I'm going to, barring any objections, move on and save the rest for Monday.
Madam Chair, so we're leaving off at, we're going to start on 3.05.
Other projected expenditures.
And 3.06 on Monday.
Yes. And any further answers to the health insurance questions? Dr. Baker, you okay with that? Fantastic. Okay, so if I could have a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, state the reasons.
I know, I know. Just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with that first.
Very much.
Be it resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidate for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and consultation with legal counsel on a matter involving actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body as permitted by Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We're now in closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0 to return to open session. I don't have my agenda in front of me, so, but we certify first, and then motion? Okay.
Make a motion that we certify a closed session? Go ahead.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Gramp, aye. Dr. Martin, Adams from closed session.
Madam Chair, we have two motions from the closed session. First motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, and retirement as presented in closed meeting, and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0 to approve the first motion from closed session. Dr. Martin, second motion.
Second motion is that, after considering evidence relating to the claim of CJ Maintenance Incorporated, the board moves that the school board deny the claim as presented.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Gramp, aye. Motion carries 7-0. Is that what he wanted?
Adjourned.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Twig.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.